Thanks, Andrew.
Next up this evening, we have Supporting Students with Disabilities, a special services and pupil services presentation from Ms. McDonald.
Thanks, ma'am.
And her team.
Good evening. Tonight our team will be presenting on students with disabilities and how they're supported regarding discipline and transportation. We are going to go a little off with our presentation. We have two members that need to get home due to emergency. So I'm going to bring up transportation. We have Angie Barber, who is our special services coordinator, and she will explain the process of special transportation. And her director, he's important to me.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. I'm going to give you a sheet to follow along. And to the beauty.
Now, three, yeah.
I can cry. Like Ms. McDonald said, my name is Angie Barber, the Special Needs Route Assistant at Warren County Public Schools Transportation Department. I've been asked to give you guys some insight on what we do for special transportation with our students that have IEPs and other requirements for special transportation. So I've been asked to explain in brief what an IEP process is. So the IEP, what I do and my position in our department is I attend IEP meetings that have been requested by individuals in different buildings, and I'll sit in on an IEP that may or may not require special transportation. I listen to the IEP team on what they deem is necessary to meet that student's needs. After we discuss what the students' needs are, I'll then go back in our department to figure out how to provide that transportation for the student. So when the team goes over different things to make sure that we're providing the least restrictive for the students so that we can make sure that we're given access to their education in the best setting that they're owed. And we've been asked to explain like how decisions are made for us to use a car or a bus or any other mode of transportation, which honestly, we only have the two. We have the buses and the vehicles. So what we'll do after I've met with the IEP team and heard from the case managers and any other teachers and parents' insight is I'll go back to the department and determine if where the physical location is of their stop and take into account which way we have to provide for pickup. If it's something that has to be accessed with a bus, I have to make sure that we pick it up door side, clear intersections, and other road hazards. If I have to access the properties without a bus, I'll use a vehicle so that we can provide based on their needs. Along, the next item that they asked me to give you guys was about how many bus drivers, car drivers, aides, and students that we're currently transporting. So with, for my special transportation staff, we had five bus drivers, eight car drivers, and six aides. Those cover two types of routes. We have special education routes. There's 13 special education routes. There are 29 general education routes that we provide in the county. Out of those routes, the students that we transport with special needs on the special education routes, we transport 75 students on those 13 routes. And out of a quick report that I could pull yesterday, we transport 75 general educate, 75 students on general education buses that have IEPs. And that's based on any limitations or high-functioning students that we want to keep them in their least restrictive environment that will place them with their peers and even siblings to get them to school. We also transport what is considered McKinney-Vento students. McKinney-Vento students are students that are homeless or displaced. So on our routes, we also include students in the special transportation. I have 14 students that we transport in special transportation. And then in general transportation, we have 12. The others, we have approximately 96 students that have been identified in our county. And some choose not to use transportation or ever have other modes of transportation. We also have a midday special transportation that we transport a total of 13 students, nine with an IEP and four without. Those students will be transported between Vought Tech High School, Non-Traditional is where we usually have them, and then some are shortened days that we are transporting to from school. The last item was to ask how does, how do I provide support to this position? I wanted to say that this, when Mr. Mitchell and them brought this position up, that it was something that was pretty new. And it's come to where I am the one that designates the special needs routes. So I attend the IEP meetings as a related service. I create, implement the routes to accommodate student needs with special needs of the McKinney-Vento students. And then I analyze the special needs routes and schedules to maintain and improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the special transportation program. This includes multiple out-of-district calendars at schools. The last is that even with everybody that's sitting in here, I try to build a positive relationship with the parents, students, and all the professionals across the county. We made other team members in surrounding counties too with our help that we've been providing for Frederick County, Flappier, Rappahannock, and Clark County at times. Is there any questions I could answer for you guys about special transportation?
What is that thing for IEPs?
It happens to fall under the McKinney-Vento.
Okay.
So we have students that we help liaison for the different counties. We currently have students in Rappahannock. We had a high number in Frederick County. And due to our own personal numbers that are now residing in Frederick County, we had to stop assisting Frederick County to transport our own to be on time. With the way that their schedule is flopped compared to ours, our students were arriving late for us to get their students on time. So we had to kind of make a compromise. We were having a hard time as a cohort to try to come up with a time that could get all our students on time.
Based on the number of students you have, do you feel like you have enough resources to be able to do the job well?
No, sir.
I guess I asked.
Yes.
What would be if you, you know, wish list?
The, in the special transportation, what I'm finding is hard to keep with staffing. And hopefully, Mr. Mitchell can chime in too. Our most needy students with the most demanding needs are in these vehicles. And our pay is $12 an hour. We're having a really hard time keeping drivers that are willing to do the long hours. Like right now, I currently have someone that's driving out DeShawn Elliott in Winchester. So by the time she drops off the other students in that vehicle and heads out to DeShawn Elliott, and she's coming back by about 6:00 p.m. And we're paying her $12 an hour. And it's really hard to keep them, to transport our most difficult students at that pay rate.
And just to build on that, I mean, it's not only are they children and need the most, but it's also from a driver's point of view, while they're not carrying CDL ISOs, they carry a lot of additional responsibility. And they go above and beyond. Just then, I interrupted a meeting she was having with the driver just the other day, and he was talking about, hey, I have this list of songs that I built a playlist for such and such because I found the need. Plays this music. He does so much better in the ride, and he's so much happier. Is everything okay? You know, that group as a whole, under her direction, does an amazing job. And I just want to, while I have the spotlight, I just want to say, when it comes to that particular portion of my operation, I mean, I'm just a brush stroke. But I mean, she's in there with this fine ballpoint pen, making sure that all those particular needs are met every day. And she's so great about doing that. And not just the position was an amazing blessing to our department. Having her in it is, I just, it's very, I...
So with that said, as we've talked on and out, hey, how are we factoring that into our budget? Because as of January 1st, minimum wage is $13.50 an hour. What are we going to do about that?
I would have to look to see if that was, you know, because usually that will come from another department to make sure that we're on track with that, to include that. So I mean, that's a good question. Because I know a couple of years, we talked about bumping it, going ahead and bumping it to 15. And I can't remember if you...
Because it's going to end up at 5...
Where we told you were with that. But I know we talked about bumping it up to 15.
Yeah, by 2026, it'll be 15.
And then any other questions for Ms. Carter? Report, Mr. Mitchell. Things of both, thank you.
For Karen.
Thank Angie Barber for everything she does. She is a mighty woman. So with me, I have Deidre Lee, our Director Department, sorry, Deputy Director of Special Services. And she will be reporting on manifestation determination. And Carla Scott, who is our Special Ed Instructional Coordinator. She will be reporting out on man's and positive supports. I have Randall Vernaza, our Director of Pupil Services and Principal of Non-Traditional, who will talk about non-traditional manners. And Jessica Monkra, our CSA Coordinator for Warren County, who will review our FAP, CNCPNT practices.
How about Sarah? You getting one cupcake?
That's the... Want to start with our G-process. Warren County Public Schools, we provide G-process to all of our protected students. Those protected students are students identified under IDEA, students identified under Section 504 of the Civil Rights Act, and students identified as having a suspected disability but may not be in a special ed category or have a 504. So those students could be a student that went through our student support team. But if it is suspected, then it is protected. So they are provided G-process. Next, want to talk about some positive behavior supports that we at Warren County Public Schools offer to our teachers and to our students. For teachers, all of our teachers are trained in relational man. This portion focuses on building healthy relations, relationships, building healthy communication skills and healthy conflict management skills. Carla will outline all of the man's practices that we use here at Warren County. All schools do have a behavior matrix. You do have a copy of behavior matrix for one elementary school and one secondary school in your folder. Those behavior matrix pretty much displays the positive behaviors we expect in different environments in the school. For student support, all of our students should be familiar with those behavior matrices. Most schools do cover those behavior matrix extenuating them or in announcements or daily and some other realm. And it could be in their classrooms. They do receive incentives for engaging inappropriate behaviors. Some of our students also have access to, all of our students have access to school counselors. But some do have access to outside counseling groups such as Connected Communities, Quiet Minds, Word Coalition, Project Courage, and student support coaches that may be able to assist. All of our outside counseling programs have a referral process that is parent-approved before those services begin. And I'm sorry, if we could, if you do have questions, you do have time to answer questions or ask questions after the presentation. Next, I'm going to have Ms. Carter come up and discuss the lead practices in the Warren County public society.
That's good. Thank you, I took care of it.
If I do have a handout, would you like it before?
Come down this way. So I came to Warren in 2003 with 18 years of experience in other counties. And in 2003 is the first time I took this, this training. And in 18 years' experience, I remember thinking to myself during that training, I really wish I'd have had this training before I stepped foot in the classroom day one. I've also taught, been trained in man since 2003 as a participant of the program. And also, I've been a trainer for the program since 2013. So I'm invested in this. I think it's really important. I call it the fundamentals of teaching. I feel like if, if you can master the skills in relational man, relational man, stress as healthy relationships with the people you serve, good communication skills as well as healthy conflict resolution skills, and I stand by it. These are the foundational skills for teaching. If we can get those and we know our content, we'll be effective teachers. At the time I started working with man, we really only trained people that were serving students who had disabilities or students who had possible volatile behaviors. I am happy to say that this year, Dr. Ballinger and Shamina McDonald led the charge that we, we get everybody trained in relational man. And, and so now, all new teachers are trained in relational man coming into our system, the full day, six-hour training. And again, it's, it's about building those healthy relationships, supporting our, our students, and not just focusing on their behaviors. That the behaviors are communicating that something needs to change. And that's, that's where we focus with relational man. Technical man is the second program. And you're, you're not, you can't take the technical man program unless you're certified in the relational program. The relational program is, is the meat of, of man. Technical is some physical strategies that, that we can apply if there's a clear and present danger of harm to self or others. And the motto is we touch to protect, not to control. And so those trainings are now mandatory for certain staff. So our clients, we hope, when the people we serve after the skills we provide in relational man, technical man, we want our, our students to feel safe. And to be able to say that in this place and with these people, I feel safe. That's kind of the man motto.
Say it again, Carla.
That in this place and with these people, I feel safe. And it's, it's a great training. I would be glad to train each and every one of you in relational man, if you were to request that. It's a great training. Any questions about me? That, that's just a brochure from their website. And I think I'm to the next slide. So along with the man's program, we also, we also follow a tiered systems for supports. We used, we kind of started this years ago, PBIS, Positive Interventions and Supports, and then Multi-Tier Systems for Supports. So it's, it's really just a foundational program that, for tier one. Tier one is just all students. So we, we apply the relational man skills. We have reinforcement system. We use points, or when I was at Reston Jeffries, we did paws and some sort of currency to award students for doing the right things to what are what we want to grow, so to speak. So that's our tier one, our foundational, that's for all kids. Our second tier is a targeted tier. So if tier one skills and strategies aren't working for some students, then we, we apply another layer. So that might be some group counseling. That may be some check-in, check-out stuff. And then for the students that tier one and tier two doesn't quite help or support, we do do individual interventions where we could bring in the student support coaches or have some mentors work with those students one-on-one. So, so all together, I feel like we're, we're doing good things to help support our students with disabilities who, who struggle with these behaviors.
Those all of them?
All right. So in every effort to provide those positive behavior interventions along with the multi-tiered system of supports, unfortunately, we still have incidents where we have students with disabilities who may have violated the code of conduct in a sense that they are, you know, we're looking at possibly disciplining them that could constitute a change of placement. So our IEP teams in that, in that process are responsible for coming together and reviewing some specifics under manifestation determination. So manifestation is required if the school is contemplating a removal that constitutes a change in placement for a student with a disability who has violated the code of conduct of the local LEA that applies to all students. And a meeting must take place before the long-term removal or pattern of removals that resulted in 10 or more days of suspension. So under the manifestation determination, the school is required to come together with a team, a multidisciplinary team, that IEP team. They best look at the child's records. And what they're trying to determine is if the disability, if the, the behavior that violated the code of conduct is a direct result of that student's disability. So they're reviewing their file and looking at the characteristics of the disability. And they have to come together and make a decision as a team. So if this is a blue chart that was added, you kind of show that responsibility of that manifestation determination. So if the team comes together and decides that the behavior that resulted in the possible suspension was a result of their disability, then that child has to be placed back into their current placement. So you cannot change their placement. So a change of placement results from 10 or more days. So if they're going to be home for 10 or more days, that constitutes a change of placement. So if the, if the committee comes together and decides that, yes, it was a result of their disability, then that child has to be returned to their current placement. And the IEP team has to reconvene and determine if there are some, some processes that we have to apply. One of those would be to look at that behavior and conduct a functional behavioral assessment to determine the underlying cause or function of that child's behavior. And then beyond that, they would develop a behavioral improvement plan to provide those positive behavior supports for the child. There is kind of a caveat to that. There are some special circumstances in which a child can be disciplined in the same manner even if they have a disability as those that do not. That would be weapons, drugs, some type of offense that caused bodily harm. If the team comes together and determines that it was not a manifestation of the child's disability, then the child can be disciplined just like any other child with the same amount of time. The only aspect of that is that we still have to follow the same process doing a functional behavior assessment, looking at a behavior plan. And also, that child is, has the right to obtain their special education services throughout their suspension. So I kind of talked about special behavior assessment and the behavior plan because it is, it is part of that manifestation determination. So as the team is working together to determine whether or not that behavior was a result of the disability, then that would, you know, lead to possible functional behavior assessment and a behavior plan at least.
So sometimes behaviors may constitute a short-term or a long-term removal. With a short-term removal, that is considered to be 10 or less days. Students are not required to receive educational services. However, if it is 10 days together, then they would be, they should receive some services. So long-term removal, if it's long, then 10 consecutive days for a series of removals, then students would be provided with their educational services. So the IEP team should come together if those interventions were unsuccessful. They will review the data of Robinson and Child's Current Placement. But only the IEP team can determine if something is working or not and determine the child's place.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Randall Vernaza. I'm the Director of Pupil Services, but also the Principal of Non-Traditional Education. So as Ms. McDonald just said, an IEP team may get together, and one of the options for placement could be non-traditional education. That would mean the team believes a student would benefit for a more restricted environment here at non-traditional. So this is our school here, and we keep a very low student-to-teacher ratio. That's very important. And we focus on getting the information that's been conducted in the FBA and the BIP. We work together as a team here to review what the students' needs are, what the students' goals are. Because at the end of the day, we want to work with that student, their needs, and hopefully, at some point, transition that student back to a traditional setting. The traditional schools, the home schools have exhausted all their resources or knowledge or toolbox, is what I say. And we need to do something different, do something else. This isn't working. What does this child need to be successful? So here in non-traditional education, we work a lot with emotional regulation. We want students to respond to situations in an appropriate way versus reacting. We want to build resiliency at any situation, stress management, coping skills, and often some improved academic deficiencies. So we do have highly qualified teachers here. But a lot of our time, we get to spend more time working one-on-one with our students and figuring out the whole child. It takes several conversations with the families to find out, you know, what is a student like at home? What do you see at home? Making sure, okay, that the messages, that we're having common communication, that what they're hearing here, they can hopefully get that same support at home, and that we're going to work together to support the whole student and whatever they, that they need. Questions about non-traditional education? Because I could probably talk about it pretty often, a lot.
Oh, heck, you know them resources. Do you need resources?
I would, since you asked, Ms. Alens. I would like to have another special education teacher. Currently, our home schools do a great job. But our students, we do have an elementary special education teacher. And our case managers at the home schools do a great job of keeping in contact with us. I know every four and a half weeks, their progress reports. We get, they get feedback on their academic and behavioral goals. But how great would it be to have a teacher here that could have all of that case load? And again, sometimes, you know, all the responsibilities that that case manager has at that home school to be here just be in the same building and have all those observations and those day-to-day conversations. I would love to have that. So thank you for asking.
And, and I'd like to follow up with that. You do two jobs.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you manage that? And what additional resources might you need? Because you are a director and a principal.
Thank you, Dr. Phoebe, for asking that question. And I have talked to the cabinet about that. The Director of Pupil Services, I feel in that role, I'm super excited about because I feel like I can devote, with maybe not having to serve both hats, I say that. Currently, being the principal and the director has been challenging. And so next year, what I'd like to do is devote more time to the Director of Pupil Services. I'd like to work more on developing discipline matrices that are consistent among all schools and that we're meeting with fidelity. And I feel like if we can get discipline and behavior more under, make it more manageable, that's going to align with better instruction in the classroom, increased test scores. I mean, it's just going to be this domino effect. So I would like to devote some more time to the Director of Pupil Services and possibly still oversee non-traditional because that would be part of that behavior, that, that passion that I have. But perhaps someone else could do the day-to-day leadership in the building itself.
Ms. Vernaza, what personnel would help you with that, with the Director of Pupil Services position?
In the people, in the Director of Pupil Services? So I'm hoping to have with the, with the highlighting what our nurses do and just reflecting on some of the situations. the situations that are happening in our, in our schools. We know about the, they being in, and the drugs in our school. Having, um, a lead nurse that's not assigned to a clinic from day to day, because we know how busy our, our lead nurses are. Um, I would like to work, uh, create a safety and security team that would include our, um, all of our school's security officers, resource officers, uh, Warren County Emergency Responders to really develop consistent, uh, school crisis plans that have common communication. And so that would be exciting to me when I took the position, I was reading each school crisis plan. They look a little bit different, but they all have the same goal. But if we could work with, uh, having a common, common tactic that, that would be great. Um, I'm learning a lot about, uh, threat assessments, so I, I feel like I've worked up closer to our school social workers, and they have been fabulous. Um, Dr. Ballinger's been giving me resources on that. But, um, thank you for letting me speak a little bit on, on that position. But then, I'm really, I just want to say, I, I love it here, Warren County Public Schools. And working with student, um, behaviors is a passion of mine. And if I could have more time to develop to that and other things that would support our whole families, I just would like to do that. Because I really believe everything else will, you'll see an increase in everything else.
Do you feel, do you feel like the, the capacity of this building is large enough for the students that need to come here? Like classroom size, number of classrooms? Is there a greater need?
You're asking some great questions. I, if I come, oh my goodness. I feel at this size of this building, and if, um, I would love, please come by, I'll give you a tour. It's limited. There's, there's just the physical space. I will tell you, our classrooms are size, are small, and we don't have very many. But I think there is a need. I love that the Warren County Public Schools has a non-traditional program. Not every county has that. We don't just support students with special needs. I'm sorry, with identified special needs. They, they have needs of all kinds. And I think more and more, you're going to see more, more of a non-traditional learner. That doesn't mean their behavior issues. Um, so I think that that's going to grow, and I think we need to be thinking of that in the future. Because I think on some of these behaviors that we see in our home schools, I'm telling you, being here for the last three years, night, it, it, it's, they thrive. I mean, I'm not saying, you know, that we still have some that we need some more support, and we're figuring it out. You figure, it was like, this is what they needed all along, just a smaller class size with more one-on-one, access to the Project Courage counselor, um, access to our mindfulness counselor that teach, you know, helps with stress relief and, and, and those types of things. So I think we do need to keep in mind the need moving forward.
Hannah asks, well, there may, that has not been renovated yet. Just saying. Um, is there, so since this is kind of all encompassing, you touched on a little bit with, um, special needs versus behavioral problems. Is, explain to me like how, it's, are, are the children, are they separated? Is everybody lumped in together? Do we have?
Our students here, Ms. Salins?
Yeah.
We have one elementary classroom. Uh, I like to, we'd like to cap that at six students, but it depends. Sometimes six students could feel like two students, but sometimes six students can feel like, you know, thirty. So it just depends. We have, um, one teacher, six students. Middle school currently, we have a total, we have two teachers, nine students. We like to cap each classroom at about four, but sometimes it depends, we can go to five, depending on the personalities and how everyone's getting along. At our high school, uh, we have four teachers and about eight or nine can fit into each class. But again, let's, let's, let's see all that. We do have an admissions team. When you're talking about the students that come here, um, beyond the students with disabilities, if there's a student that's not, uh, doesn't have an IEP or a 504, um, school administrators may see the need in a student who's not identified with a disability, but they're struggling, and the school's have exhausted, uh, you know, they've tried everything that they know how to do and have, and, you know, met with families and over and over and have done, you know, some dips. And what they can do is bring, we have an administrator at each, each level that can say, I think we need an admissions team meeting. And that includes myself, um, Ms. McDonald, Mrs. Lee, our behavior analyst that we have on staff. Um, so it's a team of people that are going to review all the data on a particular student and what's been tried. And of course, our first thing is to say, what have we missed? Because we don't want to remove a child if they're from a traditional setting. If there's something that we've, we've missed. So, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ben. So at times, um, the IEP team may disst us out of district placement. Um, currently, we have thirteen students who are out of district, um, placed. In 2223, we had nineteen students, and in 2122, we had twenty-three students. Um, I would like to bring up Jessica Moncrief, who was our CSA coordinator, that will talk about, uh, funding for students that are out of district place. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pam Jessica Moncrief. I'm the Children's Services Act Coordinator, the CSA Coordinator here in Warren County. And, um, I'm just going to go off with my stuff, but instead, it was kind of what I have there. So the Children's Services Act was enacted in 1993, um, to bring all state pool funds for, um, private day placements, residential placements, um, for special education students to one place housed for the state and local money. Um, and so what happens here in Warren County is that the IEP team makes the decision that the child can no longer be, um, educated in a private, in a public school setting. So, um, they are referred to the FACT team, which is the Family Assessment Planning Team, um, after they have gone through the IEP team process, and the IEP team has made a decision that the child can't be educated in a public school setting, and refer them to a private day setting. So it gets brought before the Family Assessment Planning Team and the Community Policy and Management Team, the CPT, to accrue funds for a child to be placed outside of the public school setting. Um, like Shania said, currently, we have thirteen students that are placed outside of Warren County for educational reasons. They are all in a private day educational setting. Um, they are also afforded services beyond, uh, what they need to manage in their IEP. So OT, PT, um, speech therapy, ABA services, all of those are funded, um, through the CSA. Um, do you guys have any questions?
So the funding, where a child is placed in a day school is no longer coming from our budget.
It is not kind of the school board's budget. It comes from the Children's Services Act budget. So transportation still comes from, um, the school board budget. We also still manage their IEPs as well. And they also still manage, um, IEPs for children that are placed in foster care. Um, so there is an overlap with that as well.
When you say that children are placed in foster care, do you mean if they're placed in foster care here, or even if they're placed somewhere in a different county?
So Warren County children that are placed outside of that locality, if they still have an IEP, the IEP team peer still manages that, um, until a child is adopted as, because Warren County is still responsible for that child's education.
Do you know about how many students we have in that situation?
Uh, with an IEP in foster care, um, yeah, it does. I, I think there's two, at least two right now. Uh, so just, yes, sir.
Any additional questions, Bra?
Thank you all. Up next this evening, we have federal accountability, and Ms. Frye.
Goodie. Um, so I'm going to talk tonight a little bit about, uh, how federal accountability is determined. Um, as you may be aware, at the end of February, the BDOE released the, uh, schools that are, and, uh, released the list of schools that have been identified, um, as, for federal academic support. And we had, uh, four of our schools on that list. And so I'm going to go over the differences between the two identifications and, um, a few things related to how we identify, identify schools. So the data that I'm giving you is an example that I'll walk you through. You can set it to the side, you know, kind of for the beginning part of the presentation, but I think it is the easiest way, um, if there is an easy way, to roll through the, uh, data determination for federal, uh, for federal accountability. So federal accountability, it, it falls under the, um, Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015. You may also have remembered back early in the 2000s, the No Child Left Behind Act. So, uh, ESSA is the update of No Child Left Behind that went into place in 2015. It required that every state submit a plan for how federal accountability, uh, will be measured within the individual states using their own testing measures. So the way Virginia does federal accountability won't necessarily match the way North Carolina or Utah does federal accountability in their state. So, uh, the interesting thing about federal accountability, and while we can have some schools identified for federal support, but have them accredited for state, is that essentially you're using the same kind of data from our SOL testing, our chronic absenteeism. You're using the same data, but it's calculated two different ways. So you can be federally identified and still be accredited. You can be accredited and have a federal identification. Same sets of data, different calculations. Um, so there are three categories for support and improvement under, uh, the federal accountability. The first one is comprehensive support and improvement, and we do not have any schools identified for CSI. The next one down, additional targeted support and improvement. Skyline Middle School is identified for ATSI. It is its fourth year of identification. It was initially identified in 2018, 19, but you have to keep in mind, there were two years where there was no federal accountability, um, issued during the years of COVID. But they've been in, uh, AT, ATSI for four years. ATSI, that, that comes from a school that has a student group that is performing below the highest level of the CSI schools. So the CSI schools are the bottom 5% of all the Title I schools in the state. So for a student group, in the case of Skyline Middle School, it's students with disabilities, they are performing below the highest CSI school in that student group. So that is how that ATSI identification comes about. Um, and then targeted support and improvement, with specific, uh, student groups in mind, E Wilson Morrison, students with disabilities and white students, uh, LFK, identified for white students, Warren County Middle School, students with disabilities and, uh, multirace students. I do want to address, because I know we've had, um, I've, I've had some phone calls and a couple emails, and I know the board has received some emails about the use of race in identification of federal accountability. So there are a total of nine student groups that federal accountability uses. And it starts with the all-students group, and then from there, it breaks down into eight groups based on race and ethnicity, socioeconomic status, disability, and limited English proficiency. That is what the federal government has set as those student groups. It is not the school district identifying which groups we see, you know, struggling or based on our own data. Those are, groups are set by federal law, and race is part of that identification. The purpose of that, when, you know, Child Left Behind, and now ESSA, it was designed to reduce proficiency gaps between the student groups in math and reading. So the schools essentially weren't being applauded for moving only certain groups forward while we left other student groups behind. So that is why the data is broken out by race, uh, English proficiency, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities. Um, and so that identification of those groups has been in place since No Child Left Behind went to effect in 2001. So if there's any other questions about that, I'm happy to answer it, but I know that we've had constituent concerns about the use of race and identification of our groups. And the other place that plays out, as we'll see, is there are different targets for those different groups that they have to hit by a certain time as we all move towards hitting the same target, um, down the road. All right. So determining TSI. So you may want to get that data sheet out that Dr. Ballinger handed out for me. So there's a lot of ands and ors that are a part of the federal identification, and you have to kind of check them off as you go. And I wanted to use Warren County Middle School. So this is Warren County Middle School's data. And what I have done is I've just created this chart because it eliminates looking at a whole bunch of numbers that we don't have to concentrate on for Warren County Middle. I've basically just copied the charts for the groups that are relevant to Warren County Middle School, which for them is students with disabilities and multiraces. So the first target that you have to hit, and I'll insert now, this is why we're seeing three schools identified for targeted support and improvement this year. You have, it's based across two years of data. So we didn't have data in, um, 2021 because federal accountability wasn't issued then, and it wasn't issued the following year either. So we're looking at 2122 and 2223 data to determine this year's federal accountability. So really, it's the first year since COVID that we have two years of data to pull all the schools in and identify them as, uh, TSI. So the first hurdle, the student groups did not meet the measure of progress in reading and math for two years in a row. Um, I don't have last year's data on here, but as you can see, if you look at reading performance, and I'm going to take students with disabilities at the bottom of the chart, students with disabilities, their rate of pass, and this is raw pass rate, no growth. If you're familiar with growth, when Denise has talked about state accreditation, this is raw pass rates. So the raw pass rate for students with disabilities was 37.35%. The target is 50. So they missed the reading target. We'll just go with, they missed it the previous year, too. Then you move down to math. The rate for students with disabilities was 41.77%. The target was 47. So they missed it by five percentage points. And again, dealing with raw, with raw data. The next piece that you have to meet is that your scores are in the lowest two quartiles in reading or math across the whole state. This is where we're flying a little bit blind, to be honest. We're, all of our schools across the state are being compared to one another to create that quartile chart. We don't know where the cut score was. So if you look at, for example, students with disabilities in the next chart at the bottom, and we take the first column, their reading growth was a 51%, that was their growth calculation. We don't know where the bar is. Maybe the bar was 50%, and, and we were only off by 1% to be into the, to the bottom quartiles. And maybe, um, or 52, maybe the, the cut rate was 70%. We just, we just don't know. Um, the state has, uh, offered a webinar on determining chronic absenteeism for next week, and we'll hopefully learn where some of these bars for the growth exist in that webinar. Um, so you missed the quartile, or you're in the lowest two quartiles for growth in, in reading or math. The next step, you didn't meet progress for chronic absenteeism. So if you flip the chart over, I have Warren County Middle's So if you flip the chart over, I have Warren County Middle's chronic absenteeism rate. Students with disabilities, a third of the students with disabilities are chronically absent, so 33% there. The target is 16, so almost half of our students with disabilities to cut that to meet the target for chronic absenteeism. And finally, the last hurdle to be identified is using the most recent school year's data you would not have been accredited. So if you look at the color chart that's in the middle, that's Warren County Middle's indicators for state accreditation. Now, you may remember, Warren County Middle School is accredited because of their triennial accreditation option, that sort of other ways that you can be accredited with the things that the state does to help. So their three-year composite got them accredited. But if you look at where they are for this year, they're red in science, and they're red in chronic absenteeism. So technically, if we were just going off of last year's data, Warren County Middle School would have been identified as accredited with conditions. So therefore, they met hurdle number four. They would not be accredited based on the most recent data from last school year. Okay, there's a test now figuring all this out. So that is the chronic absenteeism determination. Then the last chart that I have on there for you is how you exit. So once you're identified, to exit either the TSI or the ATSI status, you have to meet the interim measure of progress in both, both reading and math, and that number goes up every year. So if you take a look at year three targets, so that's going to be this year's assessment year for next year's accreditation, students with disabilities will have to get a 57% raw pass rate on reading and a 54% raw pass rate on math for Warren County Middle School to come out of federal identification. And that kind of lays out the chart for as we move forward across the years. The one thing that I will say about the numbers at the bottom, the numbers at the bottom, the targets were established prior to COVID. They did not change the numbers post-COVID. They did change the years at the top and moved essentially, moved the chart out to additional years to make up for COVID, but the raw targets in the pass rates didn't change. So in some ways, you could argue that they didn't really account for learning loss that happened because COVID, because they didn't change them. Any questions? I'll just stop right there. Any questions on determining federal accountability?
Can you explain what it means in the charts where it has students counted and that total of students?
And how do you have 59.8 bits of a student?
Yeah.
That's a question.
I count 35.
Yeah, that's a question. Some of the numbers are questions that I have that I'm hoping will come from the webinar next week, because we do have spots where we have halves and thirds of students, which is kind of strange, and then also the difference between the students counted and the total students. One point, you do have to have 30 students in a student group for federal accountability to apply. So if we have, you know, 17 EL students, then EL is not an option. It's just too small. We would not be, it wouldn't be available to be identified for that particular group. But the questions about the student counts and the total numbers are things that I'm hoping will come from the VDOE's webinar next week. And really and truly, just to be honest, the VDOE's webinar next week on federal accountability probably should have come the week before they released to the press the 247 schools that were identified, because this is, you know, it's kind of new. I mean, we got away from it for two years. TSI wasn't an option last year, and so, you know, it's kind of coming back after three or four years of being away from it. And, you know, some of us are new in these positions with federal accountability, and so it's been a fun endeavor in figuring out how we were identified and why some schools were and some schools weren't. So any other question on that TSI identification? So for Skyline Middle School, they're identified for students with disabilities. They have received the school improvement grant funds over the course of those years. You all may remember, we had talked about a project that we did with AIR in order to help support students with disabilities at Skyline Middle. That was what some of that money was spent on. And then again, for them to come out of identification, they too have to meet the reading and math target of the current year in order to come out of it with students with disabilities. So next steps, the newly identified TSI schools, along with the division, have to complete the school improvement grant application and identify which evidence-based interventions the school will use to try to help improve achievement for those identified subgroups. Just to clarify something, because I know that the race issue has come up, there are not evidence-based interventions for, you know, white students or black students. We will not be pulling students based on you're economically disadvantaged, so come over here and have this lesson. That is not how that will work. Our evidence-based initiative that we choose to improve the reading and math scores, it will work into our tier-one instruction. It will work into, you know, small group settings and those sorts of things. You don't get the support based on the group that you were identified with. I just wanted to make that clear, because I feel like that that could be another area where people have questions, like how do you target just a particular group with an evidence-based practice? Skyline Middle School, they completed their application for the SIG grant last year, and they received $150,000. They are eligible to complete a new application for additional money, but about 80% of your money has to be spent. We do have some money left over from the $150,000 that we can still spend, but they will have an option as to whether they ask for more. The newly identified schools, you have to complete the school improvement grant whether you want the money or not. So you have to complete the grant. And then all four schools and the division will conduct a comprehensive needs assessment and develop a plan for next year, and their evidence-based initiative will be part of that school plan and submit that to the state. So there's that part of kind of the next steps. The school improvement grants, they held that webinar today from VDOE about the steps for that. It is due to the state by June 30th. The TSI schools will be eligible for up to $50,000 to support the implementation, the professional development, or whatever they work towards as part of identifying their evidence-based initiatives. So I'll be working with the school principals and their teams to determine what EBI they'll be using for their reading and math students in those particular groups, and then we'll submit those applications and move forward from there. You know, some things that we have been doing to address the need already, so even though we're getting the federal identification relatively late in the school year to address for this current school year, you know, we have already been underway with working to implement the programs that have been part of all in Virginia. That's the Lexia for reading and CERN for math to help address the learning gaps that our students are presenting with. We are working now and preparing to meet the requirements for the Virginia Literacy Act and the implementation of that starting next school year, and then conducting our student-centered coaching cycles to help support teachers throughout the divisions across all of our subjects to, you know, improve our instruction for our students. So it's just a few things that, you know, that we've already been doing, that we've had as part of our plans this year to meet the needs. Are there any questions about federal accountability?
Yes. Let's go back to the data for the past couple of years. Skyline Middle School's been the one school for a number of years, and it doesn't seem like they're getting better. I mean, I didn't read all the data, but it seems like they're the same ones in the same area. Is there some other way we can improve it or get them off the list?
I understand what you're saying, and you're correct. Skyline Middle School has been identified consistently, and it seems to continue to be with students with disabilities. I do think that the turnover rate, to some degree, with our students with disabilities and our special education teachers at Skyline Middle School has impacted that consistency there. Skyline Middle has our highest turnover rate and our most inexperienced teachers, staffing, that building, and that does make a difference. And as part of that, our tier-one instruction has impacted. So our students, you know, we practice an inclusive model in Warren County. Our students with disabilities are, you know, in our classrooms and all of our classrooms. And so, you know, with that turnover rate continues at that level, you know, that instruction suffers. And again, like I say, and they also have, you know, the lowest, you know, as far as inexperience goes, they have a high number of staff that doesn't have a lot of teaching experience. So I know that IRT and special services spend a lot of time at Skyline Middle School to help support those new teachers and try to help offer practices and instructional strategies and ways to meet the needs of all of our students. And, you know, one thing about the students with disabilities group, many of those practices and evidence-based initiatives for them, it's just good instruction. All of our students benefit from, you know, from those good practices.
Do you like, they're having such high turnover rates and vacant positions and the least experienced staff to know why we're struggling to get teachers. Because I know we're struggling to get subs that are willing to teach in there as well. Is it the discipline?
I think that the climate does have something to do, does have something to do with it. We have exit surveys and things like that that HR might be able to provide a more pinpointed answer, you know, specifically from the Skyline Middle School staff that is leaving. You know, I do think that the discipline behaviors does have some impact on it, but also, you know, there's not that established mentoring staff there either. Teaching is a hard job, and, you know, what we have at Skyline Middle School, and, you know, when Dr. Johnston rearranged the schedule, we were able to get two instructional coaches at Skyline Middle School because of how it freed up some staff, and they have been really integral in doing a lot of support at Skyline Middle School. But, you know, when you have that hard job, you are facing those discipline problems in your classroom, and you don't have a very big toolbox for how to manage classroom behaviors and things like that, that does sort of breed a struggle. And so once you kind of get into that mode, you may not have a mentor with eight, 10 years' experience to help build that. So it's kind of, you know, our teacher support coordinator sometimes refer to it as kind of like babies teaching babies, and that's sort of, you know, what it can lead to as far as like the inexperience. It's not the will. It's not the desire or the want. It's just the inexperience. Other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Bragg.
Thank you. As of, we have leave policies for surrounding counties, including the Florida and then the state.
Off that for Mr. Lee. Mr. Lee has had a recruiting fair today, so I will step in for him. This is, I think, a follow-up from a previous meeting that identified, we talked about bereavement, and I believe that Mr. Lee's and Ms. Poe's mission there was to gather information to identify what other school districts around us are doing. So they have done that. They have provided us a chart on the second and third page. Rappahannock, Frederick, Shenandoah Page, and Falkir. So it kind of identifies that Rappahannock does have bereavement leave that appears that is deducted from the sick leave only. I believe that Rappahannock does some general leave rather than maybe we do some specific leave, such as personal leave and those types of things. I think they end us to a general leave. So they do provide something similar to bereavement leave. Frederick also identifies up to five days for a passing of a parent, spouse, child, or stepchild. On the third page, it does not appear that Shenandoah provides specifically a bereavement leave, but just previous positions I've held in the past, I know that they allow you to use sick leave for that. Page County, it appears to be somewhere to the same as Shenandoah, and Falkir identifies for a passing limited to four consecutive days. So there are precedents of other school divisions around us that use that, and then probably some, the others most likely do the same thing that we currently have, and that's used in the sick leave.
And Mr. Smith, I would just like to clarify that in Warren County, only 12-month and some 11-month will receive annual leave.
That's correct.
Teachers do not get annual leave.
Correct. That is correct. Only 11- and 12-month employees in Warren receive annual leave. Everyone, all folks will receive sick leave, and sick leave is based upon the number of months of which they serve. 10-month employee receives 10 days per year, 11, 11 and 12 months, 12 months are 12 days. And then 11- and 12-month employees in Warren receive the annual leave. 10-month employees receive the personal and the sick leave. So I think this was more for informational purpose of the follow-up of the question that we had of what surrounding counties provide.
Are there any questions? Was there something on this?
Could be able to clarify for 100% certainty. Is our staff allowed to use their sick days as bereavement? There's some confusion with like the email that we got, then kind of the interpretation of the wording where some of those full days, they had to have personal days used as bereavement.
Historically, we have allowed for bereavement to use sick leave.
So we're at mine with Rappahannock, with Shenandoah Page.
And then next this evening, we have teacher and instructional assistant sick leave payout incentive.
So I am taking that one back, again, subbing in for Mr. Lee, and he is at the recruiting fair. So this data just looked at pre- 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 age years and then to project kind of where we would be at if we had an incentive leave where we did a payout for teachers that met a threshold of 30 days. So one, this is only looking at people that would have 30 days or more. So if you had 31, you're included, and we'll go over the details here in a second. But 30 days and above in order to be eligible for the numbers representing here. So we did look at FY '22, FY '23, FY '24, FY '25. If you go to the, I believe it's page number four, I will kind of go over those columns there. So the first column on the right, that's the number of days that an individual has above 30. So one day above 30, all the way up to 10 days above 30. So that may be that, if you're looking at FY '22 there, there were nine people that had 31 days. If we add this back in FY '22, nine people would have qualified for one day payout. If you go now and look at 10 days there, 16 people would have qualified with having 10 sick days at the end of the year. So if you scroll down onto age full five, that'll take you to the projection for FY ' '25. So again, looking at that on the left, we can see here that running our numbers with our current staff projecting into next year, you would have 17 people that would qualify with one day, all the way down to 192 that would qualify with 10 days. Now, as we move to the right, that third column represents $100 payout. So we're saying a teacher would receive $100 for every unused sick day. Then what we did was look at, okay, if we have the subs in-house comparing to what it would cost us at a rate of $118.36, so you're comparing what it would cost us as a division to pay for those days if those people use those days versus if they decide to keep those days, we pay those out, then that'll be the cost. And then we said, okay, what is it if we have an outside visitor? So we looked at our current rates with the SS, and we figured that on the rate for a full day absence, which is 144.65, and then you have the numbers there for those same 17 days is what it would cost for us if we paid those people for the days that they'd missed, or paid for a sub for the day that they missed. Then when you get to the next column where it says WCPS teacher minus sub difference, so that's So that's just looking to say, okay, if we paid our, our teachers, or paid for the sub, it was in-house, we paid for the, the sub, what is that versus if the teacher decided to stay and then we paid them out for $100? So the savings there in that first line for one day would be $312. If you go to look at it and say, okay, what is that compared to a third party? Well, now that's for that one day at 17 would be $759. Then you work your way all the way down, and you can see that at 10 days, you know, we would be paying out if everybody decided to take their days or, or not use their days, if we pay them out. That'd be 192,000 compared to if you had to go through a REA to WCPS, getting a sub for, for you getting a third party. And you can see those savings for those days that represented. Any questions on the graph so far? Or on the, on the Excel sheet? So again, this is only looking at the people that will qualify. So you have to remember that those, those 17 people up there with only one day, that means there's 10 days that if they'd missed nine days, we're paying for that sub. So that, that's not taken into consideration. This is only looking at if those people qualify. Now, when you, you consider this and you think, okay, there's, there's, there's two things you need to consider as we look at this for teachers and instructional assistants. Yep. One, sometimes people need to use leave. We understand. So, will this be something that may change some people's behaviors as far as saying, well, I want to be paid out? And I'm not saying it's a behavior, but practices, let's say that practices. You know, would, would they say, okay, right now, if I bank that day, I'm only going to get $15 when I, when I retire. I may want to take my, my $100 now instead of my 15. So will that, will that get some of those people to say, I want to move into that 30 realm and bank for days and then get paid out? You know, so then would that be a benefit? Well, here's the other thing you have to consider is that if it doesn't change practices, current practices with employees, then this would be an extra cost. Because if, if current practices of missing days don't change, and only a select few of people don't miss time, then you're only going to be paid for those that, one, wasn't using a lot of subs in the first place. But also, on the flip side of that, if this is an incentive to where people will say, I would rather have that 100 instead of that 15, we do, we are seeing our, our workforce become younger with less than three years of experience. So this is a long-term, if you're a first-year teacher, you're going to have to teach four years to get 40 days if you don't use a single day. So you're going to have to first bank your first year of TAN, your second year of TAN, and your third year of TAN to qualify for this program. So could that also be a savings over a long period of time that these people are saying, I want to get to this incentive, and so I am going to bank some of my days now to purr this incentive here in year four and four? So, you know, will there be, and you don't, you can't determine that on how that would have an effect or not. But if you look at it in a positive light, say, yes, that could affect another 100 people, then that could be a long-term savings for the division if that was out of that manner. But there's days that, you know, people may just decide, I need a day. I need a mental health day. And that's okay. I mean, you know, that's why they have their days. I mean, you know, but also, I can see this, that for an individual, for a teacher, to say, all right, I would rather take my 100 versus my 15. But again, we would leave that option open. I was talking to my superintendent's advisory today, and that was one of the questions asked. Well, is it mandatory if this policy goes in place or is it optional? I said, no, it would be an option. If you want to bank your days, you can bank your days. And that is a decision for you as a staff member. We're not going to tell you, you have to, you have to pay on that or receive that payout. So, moving on down, if you look at the instructional assistance, and we did throw some graphs in there. I did try to clean those up. The others were a little blurry. I don't think I did a very good job on the first, first one, but I think I did a little bit better job on the second graph and the third graph there. Then you get into the instructional assistant side. And again, these charts, when you get to page 11 and 12, are exactly just like what we just talked about on the teacher side. Now, on this one, since the pay rate for a sub is $94, this payout for a sub is $50. So we figured $50 here. So that's similar to what? On the teacher's side, the payout's 144, so we said, well, I'm going to pay 100. Here, it's 90, we're going to pay 50. So there's still that benefit of, you know, so it's not $100. Now, if you throw $100 in there, you're losing money because you're paying more than you are for, for, for a high sub. So, you know, looking at it from that perspective. But these are all, you know, so, so those sheets are set the same exact way as we just talked about on the teacher's side. So you would have to add both the teacher and the instructional assistant to get about $120,000. If everybody on this sheet said, you know, we're not going to use, we want a payout, so it's an incentive for us to, to come to work, which is an incentive, or it's great for our students to have the, the teacher in the classroom. But again, how will that affect us with those that are not in this group? Because if you remember on the budget slide, I think it shows 400 and, 430 teachers or, or something of that nature. So these numbers only represent just a little over half, because we're sitting at 252 there. So you're only at half of your teaching staff. Just a little over half the teaching staff. So, you know, that, that is something you need to consider too as, as a board. But just want us to present this to you to let you, you look at that. And that, again, is just the people that would qualify.
Any questions, thoughts on this?
Is there a way to get a sense of the, the people who would qualify, you know, through a survey or something like, do you like this idea? What do you, what do you think?
So we've been talking, so, you know, like I said, I talked to my superintendent's advisory today. And, and they, they liked it. Some of them said, you know, I would still bank my days. And some of them said, you know, it'll all depend upon, I had children sometimes. You know, I was good all the way up until just this last month, and I've had to stay at home for two weeks. And we understand that. That happens. It's, life happens. You know, we, it discussed today, even our current incentive program. And some of them say, well, you know, when they spun the wheel, there was only 10 people in my list. So I wanted the chance of winning, and I won. So, you know, looking at it from that perspective, they think it's great that some teachers and some staff members may say, yes, I want to bank my days because I'd rather have the 100, the $100 than the $15. I've been working with, and I started talking with WCEA about this back in September, October, even a little bit of last year where we were doing this, the, the current one that we're, we're on, the incentive program. So I know that has been out and I've been talking with WCEA, and we've had a lot of conversations about this sick leave payout. They like this, this as well from that organization.
Any other special questions, comments?
Yeah.
So do we move forward with this with, of those? Or where does this go? Not tonight, obviously, Graham. So are we going to put it on the next?
So I think it would go on our next board meeting unless somebody has strong objections that...
Well, if I may, I think what we should do is that, you know, one, we need to work a policy. So we need to work this into our current leave policy and, you know, put in some, some language and then bring that for our readings, so that you guys look at those first reading, second reading, third reading. And also you can get, you know, that's when staff members can come and state about the readings or they can email or whatever. But I think if the board is wanting to move forward with this and think, okay, let's give this a try and see how it works out, maybe it will be, you know, one, it can benefit our employees and it can benefit our students. But if you want to try it, then, you know, if that's what I'm hearing tonight, we will, I will work with Mr. Lee since this is an, since this is an employee and work through him to modify the, the language and the policy so that we can bring that to start with the first reading. And is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Okay.